I'd love, or I'd like to call some meetings. I'd love to call the start of the meeting for Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education, regular meeting on May 3rd, 2021 at 6:30 PM in the Mount Pleasant Performing Arts Studio. The meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public but is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at a previous meeting or presented to the board for any discussion this evening. I'd like to call to order, please turn off your cell phones at this time and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Indigenous Land Acknowledgement Statement, Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Ishanawee people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Ishanawee people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation and a way of honoring the Indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time memorial and whose land on which Saginaw Chipewa Indian Tribe have resided and who have continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Next, we're going to do roll call. Dana Cawkins?
Here.
Tim Odeker?
Here.
Willene Pangol?
Here.
Courtney Stegman?
Here.
Jessica Jernigan?
Here.
Sheila Murphy?
Here.
Amy Bond?
Here.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything that they would like to change or add? Next is the statement from the Board of Education. As your Board of Education, we are committed to ensuring our schools are safe and welcoming for all of our students. We understand many people in our community have questions and concerns about a recent incident involving students and staff at Gannyard Elementary. We would like to ensure our entire community that we are addressing the matter with our seriousness and care it deserves. As you may know, District Administration has already conducted a preliminary review of the incident, including conducting interviews, reviewing videotapes, and photographic evidence consistent with the laws and district policies and procedures. In addition, a third-party independent investigation has been initiated that includes reviewing the same video and photographic evidence and interviewing relevant district personnel as well as students and our families. Transparency is important. So is getting all the facts. We would like to ask our families and the larger community to please be patient while we await results of this external third-party investigation. We greatly appreciate and truly understand your concern regarding this matter and look forward to providing you an update as soon as our investigation is complete. Our hope is to learn from this incident and make our district even stronger. Meanwhile, we will not be distracted from our mission to provide a world-class education to all Mount Pleasant Public School students. Next this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we do have a letter from the Board that we would like to say to all of the Mount Pleasant Public School teachers. We, the Board of Education, recognize that National Appreciation Week is May 3rd through 7th this year. We would like to mark this occasion by acknowledging everything that the teachers of Mount Pleasant Public Schools do for our students. We recognize that teachers serve not only as educators but also as counselors, nurturers, and friends to our children. You are the eyes that watch our children grow, the ears that hear their laughter and listen to their struggles, the steady hands that guide them through their most formative years, and the hearts that create a place where students can thrive. Your selflessness, giving plays a role, vital role, in the success of our whole community. In recognition of your dedication and hard work, the Trustees of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education publicly extend our appreciation to you and thank you for all that you do. Next is the G.I.R.E.S.D. Budget Presentation.
Yep. Good evening, everyone in your board packet this evening. You have a proposed budget from the Gracia-Isabella R.E.S.D. I would like to introduce to you this evening Kevin Cold. Kevin is Associate Superintendent for Finance of Gracia-Isabella R.E.S.D., and he's joined us this evening to walk through this process. So, thank you for being here, Kevin.
You're welcome. It's just two pages. Everybody should have, I have a copy. You'll notice that on the first page I always list the village rates because part of the total taxation you have to include into your budget, the village rates, part of the budget. You'll notice that our, it says approved on June 16th, 2021. That's when our Board should approve this. I always put the date on advance, so I don't forget to do that. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And during my presentation, if you have questions, just feel free to stop me because it doesn't throw me off. I'm gonna go through this in just a little bit more detail than normal, because I understand you have a few Board members and new Board members, and I think you might find it helpful. This is just our general fund budget. Our total budget's about $35, $36 million. So this is just a smaller part of it, but this is the only part of the budget that local districts are supposed to approve for their R.E.S.D. It's in law, so. On the second page, you'll see three columns. The first column is our last, is our actual numbers for 1920. Those are numbers taken right from our audit. Our middle column is what our final amended budget will be for this year. And then the proposed column is the proposed budget for next year, and that's the actual budget that we're asking local districts to approve. And I'll just go down through these one by one. Local sources, you'll see it's about $1.2 million. A vast majority of that is property tax collection. That's about $828,000. State sources, $3.5 million. About $1.8 million of that is our Section 147(c), which is retirement funding that we receive from the state. And you'll see later in the budget where we transfer a lot of that money to other funds wherever the wages are paid. So that kind of comes in and out of this fund to a large extent. Also included state sources is our Section 81 money. It's our unrestricted state aid that we use to operate, $758,000. And you'll see that we, and we also have $400,000 even of 31N. 31N is our money that we receive to provide mental health services to our local districts. And then we've got $378,000 of early literacy grant, which is also used to provide services to our local districts. And then the other sources, $922,000 is charges that we charge other districts for tech services, $570,000. Business services, $279,000. And then pupil accounting services, $74,000. If you look under pupil services, $188,000. $400,000 even of this is the mental health services that we receive the grant for, and then we get the money rate out, we contract that all out. So that's $400,000. The balance, the $88,000, $982,000 is all truancy services. And that's the cost of the person, their benefits, and then all the travel and all those related costs. So we provide truancy services for our districts. I see Mount Pleasant utilizes a lot. Other, some districts don't hardly utilize it at all. I'm surprised. Instructional services, $1.2 million. This is all of our instruction department, which also includes early literacy, which we did our early literacy grant for, $378,000. And then also, we provide pupil accounting services to some districts, and we bill them for those services. General administration is our Board and Superintendent costs. I think that's probably not much different than other districts. We all have our Board and Superintendent costs, so Superintendent Secretary. And the next one is business services, $1.3 million. We provide business services, not only, this is for, all of our business services for our R.E.S.D., our 35, $36 million budget, but also, we provide all business services to four districts, Ithaca, Corack Ridge, St. Louis, and Ashley Schools. We do all their business, including payroll. And then we also do payroll processing for Pleasant Schools and Alma Schools. So there's quite a bit in there. So we put all those costs in here, and then we bill other districts and other funds of the R.E.S.D. for those services. Operations and Maintenance is our custodian costs. Our utilities, property insurance, repairs, $203,000. And then Central Services, $1.2 million is our tech, is our technology services. We perform a lot of technology services for other districts, and for MMNet, and then for also the R.E.S.D. And then also, including Central Services, our pupil auditing services. We contract with Claire Gladwin to do our pupil auditing services, and then we pay that cost. We don't bill districts for those costs. So our total revenues is $5.6 million. Full expenditures is $4.9 million, almost $5 million. Gives us revenues over expenditures of $645,000 before we transfer, before transfers in and out. Transfers in, $1.2 million, almost $1.3 million is for services that we provide to other funds. And that's basically all of our indirect costs is for business services, technology services, and all those type of things for our other funds. And then operating transfers out is the largest portion of that is transfers out to the Special Ed Fund for some social security costs that were placed from Proposal A, $148,000. And then all these retirement funds that we, we received as a state grant further up in the budget. So, and then we transfer money to other funds, our COAT Fund. Our COAT Fund, we are, that's where we come for the implementation of our finance software. We're paying those costs for all the districts, so that's a big part of the transfer debt fund. And then we also transfer $300,000 every year to our capital projects fund. And the reason we do that is because we don't have very much bonding capacity, so we accumulate funds over years so that when we need to do projects, we have the money available. And it's based on a projection of how much cost we expect in the future is how much we put in each year. And it's been $300,000 for years. And in recent years, we've done a lot of capital projects. A lot of things were put off, so. So you'll see that our net projected reduction of fund equity is $140,000. We're really expecting that to be closer to $300,000. We did redo, lay off some personnel this last year, so we did have some savings from that. So our beginning fund equity for, as of July 1st, is projected is $2.8, almost $2.9 million. And the ending fund equity is $2.7 million, projected. And one thing that we do with our general fund is also, we rely on general fund to cash flow some of our funds that don't have enough funds available to cash flow, so we don't have to borrow. We run Michigan Works in two counties. That's one fund that relies entirely on general fund for cash flow, because we'll spend the money, and it usually takes us close to 60 days before we reverse those costs. That's, I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Kevin, can you walk through the resolution that's also included?
Did I get?
The resolution?
It should have been mailed with the...
Yeah, I just, can you walk through that with our Board, please?
I don't think I have a copy. I can walk, if somebody gives me a copy, I can. I can open, I have a copy, do you? I don't know if anybody asked me a question about the resolution before.
I just want to make sure that everyone understands how it works.
Oh, I guess I...
So basically, we're just approving this resolution to support the operating fund budget that you've just walked through?
Right.
You'd like us to do this prior to your June meeting, which is June 16th, right?
Yeah.
And so the Board could either do that this evening, or we have, actually, we have two other meetings prior to June 16th we could do that at.
Yeah, it's a legal requirement. One thing, if every district voted it down, our Board can still approve it. So I don't know what the purpose is to have all locals. I think it's good because it's good for you guys to see what our budget's about. We have a lot of things in our budget and other funds that, you know, I impact you guys, maybe not. Some, the Michigan Works obviously won't impact you much by our Special Ed Fund, that we're doing. Just a quick question, a quick background on our Special Ed Fund. That's our biggest fund. We basically pay for all the center-based programs, and those programs are picked out based upon the local districts, what they need for services at center-based programs. And then we always collect more tax revenue than we need to fund those programs. We have IDA funds, a lot of different funds. But whatever we collect in excess of paying for those center-based programs, we pay out the senior six funds. So our idea is not really to add to fund equity or reduce it, but always pay out whatever extra revenue we have in those funds to our local districts to help support your programs. They call that Act 18 payout. We pay out about $4.8 million every year. We subtract from that. Sometimes districts get speech, or social work, or psychological services from us, and we subtract that from those payments if we're providing those services for the districts. But that's how our Special Ed Fund works. And we've got a COAT Fund, which is a whole bunch of little funds all combined into one big fund, and it can't for all kinds of stuff in there, but... This does state the law. This is Section 380, 1624, the revised school code. That's the reason why local districts have to approve our general fund budget. And this motion really hasn't changed other than the debates and stuff. It's really changed in years.
Kevin, a quick question. Do you know what the percentage of your fund revenue balance at the end compared to what your budget is? Because we often talk here on the school board about what our percentage is of our revenue, right? So Michigan Association School Board gives us a kind of a parameter. I just didn't know if you had a kind of a number that...
On this, you can see that our, our general fund is roughly 50% fund equity. That would be high a lot for a lot of local districts, but you don't, your general fund doesn't typically cash flow other funds. And we need a little bit extra, we need extra cash in this fund to pay for some of those funds that don't have proper cash flow. Or we would have to borrow one. Years ago, we used to borrow money. We haven't done that in quite some time.
And just a quick comment, Kevin. Thank you for going through each one of these sections. We really do appreciate better understanding how that is. Because we're a very strong partnership, and it's complex in your space and our space, but we overlap a lot. So sometimes it's difficult for Board members to differentiate. And so by you going through and explaining some of this detail, it's very helpful. So thank you for doing that.
Well, you're welcome. And, you know, I'm more than happy to come here anytime to explain things, you know, if people have questions. It's, I think the more information people have, the, you know, the more they understand of, you know, it's, I think, the better, so.
Are there any other questions? Thanks for having me.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kevin.
Next is the district's upcoming events.
I just wanted to make sure that all of our Board members had the information on year-end events. Although our events look different this year because of COVID, we wanted to make sure that you knew of upcoming year-end events. I do want to point out camp at Fancher and at McGuire. Excuse me. As you know, typically, our 5th grade students attend camp every spring at Camp Halewenta. Because it's not possible, our building principals worked together and found a camp that will bring camp to them. So on May 12th, the camp will be at McGuire, and on May 13th and 14th, the camp will be at Fancher. So they'll be doing different outdoor activities and cohorted groups and working with the camp counselors that will be there. So we're really excited to still give them a camp option, even when we can't give them an overnight experience. So we will continue adding to this list. You did all receive an invitation to the Mount Pleasant Community Education and Way Commencement Ceremony. The Senior Honors Program will be a virtual program this year, and then there's more information there regarding the Mount Pleasant High School commencement ceremony. And those details are still being worked out. I know you received an email this week from Liz Bush. As we finalize more of those details, we'll be able to share that with you as well. But I just wanted to at least have you save the date for some of those events if you're able to attend.
For the camps that are at McGuire and Fancher, is this open to online orders as well?
You know, I would think so, but I'm not sure how they're inviting families. So let me find that out for you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Jen, I'd like also to thank you for sharing with the new Michigan Department of Health recommendations and structures for these events, so we can continue to have them in a COVID-safe way.
Yes.
That was a very informative piece that you shared with us today.
Interesting. Let's offer our reports and updates.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to acknowledge that we have received correspondence from grouping of people, the Gannyard staff, the Ribbage family, the Mostatson family, Carolyn Hancock, Kathy Lester, Jennifer Jared, Terry Crispin, Nina Beans, Debbie Mappula, Chelsea James, Megan Jennings, June May, Al Kyle, Karen Fernands, or Fernands Hakiman, Lori Jenkins, Sharon Trumpy, Kathy Lester, Teresa Genesek, Ray Grover, Sarah Gerber, Liz Diather Martin, Anika Butler, Pamela RW Kent, Brianna Vanquez, Emily Repnick, Maureen Walton, Heather Traumer Beardsley, Rod Grandy, and Joe Ferry. Next up, we have the Consent Agenda. Tonight, on the Consent Agenda, we have the approval of the meeting minutes from the April 19th, 2021, regular meeting minutes, and the 4/19/2021 regular meeting minutes with our closed session.
I move to accept those minutes?
Is there a second?
I have a second, Beth.
All right. Is there any questions? All in favor, say yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And that motion passes. Next on the agenda is New Business. First is the G.I.R.E.S.D. General Fund Proposal Budget and Resolution.
Is that what we just heard?
Yeah, so this is what Kevin just presented this evening. So I think you all can make the determination if you would like to take action on this item tonight, or if you'd prefer to wait and do that at our next meeting.
I'd move to go ahead and approve it.
Second? So there was a motion and a second for that. Do we need to do roll call, or can we do?
It's a resolution, so yes, I believe you need a roll call vote.
Courtney, Dana Cawkins?
Yes.
Tim Odeker?
Yes.
Willene Pangol?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Amy Bond?
Yes.
That unanimously passes. Next is the Teacher Tenure Candidate Extensions.
Good evening. You have in your packet a list of our teachers who have successfully completed their probationary period. And so at the end of this year, that will be, they have met their requirements and are being recommended by their building principal for tenure status. Kendra Asher, Ashley Buckley, John Burnett, Sophia Darter, David Durfee, Alicia DeBuce, Ashley Carpenter, Kalen Carroll, Kim Chapman, Kristy Fankin, Ryan Greaves, Sarah Greaves, Julie Jackson, Aubrey Johnson, Desiree McCormick, Sarah Muscat, Allison Laprise, Jacob Lazaroff, Maddie Rybant, Stephanie Suddler, Jessica Stefani, Jessica Traywick, Emily Shiner, Wendy Ullery, and Megan Williams.
And next is the probationary teacher contract extension?
They're achieving tenure at the end of this school year.
I'm sorry?
Yes, they are, they are probationary teachers who have earned their tenure at the end of the school year.
So is there a motion to approve those extensions?
So moved.
Second?
Second. And is there any questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And the motion passes.
And then our next list is teachers who have achieved their next year of probationary status. So in year five of probationary status, we have Kayla Ailing, Bryn Gutiman, Amanda Hutchins, Lori Lilly, Stephanie Olver, Mike Marshall, Josh Stutzman, Amanda Topson, Kristy Voles, Alex Wagner, Dan Weber, Amber Yeagley, and Angela Zennaber. And then for year four probationary status, starting the '21, '22 school year, Josh Aarti, Brandy Brewer, Marilyn Dawson, Lynette Eichenlob, Jordan Gerhart, Sarah Kebaugh, Andrea Langley, Abigail Lewandowski, Karen Noel, and Craig Serbrook. Beginning year three of probationary status next year, Jennifer Chandler Connor, Kim Chapman, Daniel Formzma, Chelsea Gordon, Kaitlin Kovak, Scott McNeil, Alexandria Melkey, Cassandra Mistrack, Chelsea Olat, Sarah Olat, and Craig Serbrook. And finally, in year two of probationary status, we have Hannah Allen, Zachary Brown, Abby Ernst, Karen Kimball, Alicia Karen Kimball, Alicia Krieger, Mary Melarango, Abigail McCulciak, Megan Phelps, Allison Rydel, Alora Soto, Isabel Stanton, Samantha Schopfer, Samantha Snow, Samantha Stobe, Emily Stout, Louis Veda, Brianna Wing Brenner, and Karen Zaleski.
Would like a motion to recognize their movement of moving forward?
So moved.
Second.
I have a question. Linda, Craig is on there for year four and year three. Which one should he be on?
He should not be on year four. He should, next, this coming year is year two.
Okay, so the 2024 one?
Sorry about that. Thanks for catching that.
There's, there's Kim Chapman on there twice. I didn't know if we had two Kim Chapman. She's on third year and she's in the last document for five-year tenure.
She is on our year three chart.
So I have Kim Chapman under year three. And then in the document before that, she's also listed for the tenure candidate.
I might have to look her up. Kim came to us with experience. So I think her starting year, she's been with us two years, but she came in with experience. So I will double check that one.
Thanks. Is there any other questions? And we had a motion and a second with that. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. And that motion passes. Thank you very much to all of our teachers and congratulations on moving forward within your careers. Next is the PNC bank account signatory approval.
Yes, it was recently discovered that the signers on our PNC bank account were inadvertently missed, being updated when we welcomed Ms. Verliger as superintendent. Not only that, but we need to remove the former superintendent and we need to update from my maiden name to my married name. Our PNC bank account is definitely not our main bank account. We only write paper checks out of this account and we transfer money in from our main bank account to cover those paper checks. So it's just an in and an out. But we do need to have this formal approval so we can take it to the bank. Jen and I have an appointment later this week to bring in our, you know, two forms of identification and all that stuff to make it official. But we do need detailed minutes signed by the board president to bring to the bank as well to make these changes.
Is there a motion to, is there, are there any questions? Is there a motion to make the necessary changes on the bank account?
So moved.
Second reading?
Wonderful. All right. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. And that unanimously passes. We can get that signature for you. Next is the citizens' request to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda items. We did have anyone who wanted to speak tonight sign in on the yellow piece of paper. So we will call individuals up in order.
And certainly you all are able to still sign up. We just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a line due to social distancing. So first up is Erica Patera. And Erica, just make sure you speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you. I am here today to share with you a letter that we wrote as a collective staff in an effort to remind you of our hearts as educators. In light of the recent media attention, it is our understanding that the board is being asked to call, being called upon to take immediate action, many arguing in favor of forced dismissal of our administration. We ask that you take a firm stance in support of our staff, administration, and district as a whole. Right now, your silence is deafening. The news, social media, calls, and emails from strangers across the nation is loud. But our community can be louder. We ask that as a school board, you speak up. We need your voice of support. At Gannyard, we have received numerous letters of support, countless positive phone calls from parents who trust us daily with their children, as well as dozens of thoughtful and encouraging notes, gifts, and words of appreciation. The parents and community members that send their children to Gannyard stand firm in their support. Despite all of the negative media attention, despite the need for additional police presence in our schools amidst the threats received, and despite the uncertainty of the backlash our district is receiving, they showed up for us and stood behind us because of their collective personal experiences with the staff at Gannyard. They recognize us to be inclusive, kind, and nurturing educators. They know our hearts, and they know we always put students first. They see the untruths and half-truths being splashed across their Facebook accounts and other media outlets. And they know with confidence that Gannyard staff is being poorly and inaccurately misrepresented. We kindly prevail upon you to be as unwavering in your support as the families of the students that we teach have been. Let us continue to highlight all of the good things our district provides our learners. Let us take strength in the thousands of local community members who know our schools and know our staff and continue to support us. Let us use this opportunity to show what has always been true. Gannyard Elementary is a caring place where children recognize and achieve their full potential through values of respect, responsibility, and safety. Thank you, the Gannyard Elementary staff.
Next person is Angelina Maney.
Good evening. I'm here today to express support for the staff and students alike at Gannyard Elementary. To work in a public school, particularly in a lower elementary school such as Gannyard, means school staff aren't just responsible for passing on knowledge and preparing students for the next grade level. To work in a public school means staff are acting through the lens of parenting. Each day, staff are confronted with issues of hygiene, abuse, and neglect in various forms, behavioral concerns, socioeconomic status issues, and the list goes on and on. First and foremost, staff must look out for the best interest of the student before it can be even remotely possible for them to think about teaching academics to a student who faces these challenges. Educators are taking on so many more roles than just teaching our children academics. The staff at Gannyard are proof of this. Their compassion is unmatched. They feed and clothe children when necessary, oftentimes with money out of their own wallets. They pride themselves on creating a safe environment for all children with a sense of unification and community as strong shared values. Current events at Gannyard have turned into a social media firestorm with racial undertones. Please do not let these misconstrued events cloud your judgment. I urge all involved to support the staff at Gannyard. Please focus decision-making on the safety, security, well-being, and well-being of the Gannyard employees rather than trying to please outside communities who have encouraged the misinterpretation of this story to spread, resulting in threats of violence to many of your dedicated staff members. I've also got another letter I'd like to read here from one of our dedicated volunteers at Gannyard who was unable to make it tonight. Says, "I write to you today out of concern for the staff and students at Gannyard Elementary as a random act of kindness becomes a misrepresented media event and escalates to threats of violence. Regardless of the solution's correctness, I am confident it was done with the best of intentions for the student and without prejudice, bias, or malice. I personally have put in significant hours of volunteer time at Gannyard and make this statement with the utmost confidence. The staff at this school make it their mission to not only meet the educational needs of all students, but as appropriate, to attend to their physical, social, and emotional needs as well. I've witnessed them package up leftover food from meal programs to give to families of students who would not otherwise eat over a weekend. I've witnessed them buy coats for those sent to school on a cold day without one. I have seen them ensure that a student isolated by classmates gets included in group play. Christmas gifts purchased and cookies made by staffers sent home over the holidays for all who would otherwise have no holiday. This staff works hard and works continuously to create for all students an atmosphere of unity, team, respect, and confidence. And they do so by not only lending their professional talents, but by giving of their personal time. This situation is escalating quickly. I urge the board to support all teachers involved and to secure the safety and well-being of the entire staff and student body. Let's not let red flag fail, let red flags fail yet again. Thank you for your time and consideration. Dee Welk." Thank you.
Our next comment is Bernita Bradley.
Good afternoon or good evening. My name is Bernita Bradley. I'm the Midwest delegate for the National Parent Union. And I'm here today to read off a letter, also to acknowledge the fact that this meeting should have been done via Zoom according to the governor's issue for Open Meetings Act. And that act was to go into effect until 2022. So we would like for the next meeting to have a Zoom link accordingly so that families who aren't able to be here or choose to continue to practice social distancing can actually participate, according to Governor Whitmore's actions put into place last year. Excuse me. So I'd like to read two letters. And you have those letters I sent into the, thank you for reading those in advance. We at the National Parent Union are supporting and equipping parents with, particularly this family, with the tools to ensure their children receive the best education possible and without harmful incidents. We have advised the family around what should be sought, and they are in agreement. The following are in need of resolution. A formal apology, which I would like to acknowledge the apology letter sent from the superintendent concerning the situation that alluded to the fact that a seven-year-old child asked for her own hair to be cut, and that apology was not acceptable because it also put the blame back on a child, knowing that there was two adults who actually planned to cut a child's hair without parent consent. So we're asking for another formal apology to the Hoffmeyer family for violating their rights in cutting Journey's hair without parental advisement or consent. Formal consequences to be to the educators and staff who decided to act without parental permission, guidance, or consent and cut Journey's hair. Damages based on the injury and mental anguish that has taken place. Formal policies in place that will prohibit future harm in this or any other manner that indicate discriminatory practices based on race, ethnicity, hair type, texture, or style. Resolve to follow the law and not assault children in any way. Resolve to have best transparent practices with a spirit of respected collaboration as parents are co-partners in their child's education. Resolve to follow the law and best practices when requested are made, when requests are made. Again, I would like to add, resolve to follow the law, not any type of emotional uprisings or any type of concerns that comes from a person, but the actual law that stands in place to protect all children from any type of harm that has been placed on a child. We also would like to say that we are asking these things to be done in a timely manner. We respect the opening statements about your practices, but we are asking that this be immediately submitted to this family. They've asked, we asked, I asked with Mr. Hoffman on the phone two weeks ago, and we are demanding again that within 10 business days, there be some form of a resolve written about this situation. Now, in my own self, as a mother, I'm an advocate, but I'm a mother first. I have been advocating for children out of a similar incident that happened with my daughter based on a school, a school's incidents with my child. And any parent, any parent, if you are a parent and you are sitting on this board, I would like you to consider the fact that if your child came home with less hair, with less anything than what you sent them to school with, how would you respond? If your child came home and there was harm done emotionally, physically, sexually, financially, in any way to your child, how would you respond? Would you care that the teacher had best interests? Or thought it would be in best interest of that child? Or would you care that the actual act happened to your child? And I would pose that to any child, any parent, or anybody that talks, speaks, engages, or employed with children on any level. That goes for anybody who would threaten any staff or anything concerning this. We do not condone threats. We ourselves have received emails. We ourselves have received threats for advocating on this matter. But what we want you to understand is that we are speaking for the heart of this child who was injured by staff members at your school who intentionally planned to harm a child. Thank you.
Our next comment is from Rod Grandy.
Hi, my name is Rod. To the members of the Mount Pleasant Board of Education, I happen to be the husband of one of the first-grade teachers at Gannyard Elementary. This has been a very difficult time for us to see my wife's coworkers and friends wrongly accused of racism and to have their lives being threatened as a result. Even more difficult to me, for me, to see is my wife receiving harassing emails accusing her of being racist as well. My wife and I are part of a biracial family ourselves, as well as one of the teachers being accused of racism in this incident. And that alone makes these allegations especially offensive. Considering the relationship to this story, I have obviously followed this closely and know that these accusations are false, as I am confident the board knows this as well. I am also confident that the board is aware of the outstanding reputation of the teachers involved in this incident, as well as the unfortunate circumstances that have led to this mess. I also know that a portion of the Black community here in Mount Pleasant have reached out with support for Gannyard Elementary, either on social media or in person. This tells me these attacks are not from our community here in Mount Pleasant as much as they are from outside instigators. I strongly encourage the board to release as much of this story as legally possible to put this false narrative to rest. I also strongly encourage the board and administration to stand their ground and fight these allegations vigorously. I would warn the board that if you bow to this angry mob by firing people involved or even apologizing, you are admitting guilt, and if history repeats itself, you'll be under scrutiny from here on out. You will never be able to do enough to satisfy these race-baiting organizations. I would also hope that this board would not be satisfied to simply see these false allegations go away as they usually do when the truth finally comes out in situations such as this. But would instead take legal action against any and all organizations who have doxxed, defamed, or slandered their teachers and administrators. With the world we live in, I know this can be scary, but now is this board's chance to stand your ground and make a difference. The bottom line is the facts in this case need to come out as soon as legally possible, and the people involved are done being slandered and threatened. Thank you for your time.
At this time, we don't have anyone else sign up for public comment. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Anyone who would like to address the board? Please state your name when you're, you're up there just so we can make record. Thank you.
Okay, hi, can you guys hear me? My name is Victoria Bradley. And I would just like to speak on behalf of Journey, that this, the teacher cutting her hair was an act of violence, um, an act of racism. Journey stated that the teacher had previously stated that she wanted to straighten her hair when it's in its natural state. And with all due respect, no matter the acts of like kindness that you guys do, or the elementary does, it was still wrong to cut the child's hair. And that was not an act of kindness. No matter if you, or not you, but the teachers come out of pocket or sacrifice anything for the students, it mentally broke her down, physically broke her down. And if it was my child, I would have not taken the actions that Mr. Hoffmeyer took. But I just want to say that it was wrong. And I respect the other teachers, but it was just not an act of kindness as they stated that they do, or that they, um, action, or, you know, the action that they take for other students. But this action was not taken for Journey. So I would just like for that to be stated. Yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to approach the board at this time? Is there anyone else? Okay, not seeing any, we'll move on. Next is the Board of Education's Discussion. This is the opportunity for any board member to discuss any issue or concern that they might have.
I have a couple of things I'd like to mention. One, I would like to remind everyone that tomorrow is an election, and on that election is the annexation of Mount Pleasant Public Schools to Mid-Michigan Community College District. This will allow our students to go to Mid-Michigan Community College at the community college rate as being an in-district student as compared to an out-district student. And so the board has already voiced, and we've been supportive of this. So we'd like to encourage everyone to go tomorrow and vote for the annexation of Mid-Michigan, Mount Pleasant Public Schools with Mid-Michigan Community College. The other thing I'd like to mention is tomorrow, the Mount Pleasant, I mean, the Isabel County Community Foundation is having a very large fundraiser for many of the organizations in our community who are not able to do fundraisers due to COVID. It is called Give Isabel, or Give Local. I highly encourage people to go to the Community Foundation's website. The Mount Pleasant Public Schools Education Foundation is one of the entities that is getting funds raised for them during this event. It is a special event. It is only 24 hours in length, and it is open to anyone to donate. So I'd like to encourage anyone to go to the website and donate to the Education Foundation or any of the other great organizations that are listed there that are partners with the Community Foundation. That is everything I have to mention.[1775.52]